A call, I mean, need to order. I invite you to begin with the pleasures of allegiance.
... paid by the word.
... by the United States of America and through the Republic for rigid stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Gary?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. Fargo Fire Department is busy taking care of children this week. Chief Turkson has a granddaughter with him. The Fire Department has been busy preparing for the upcoming flood fight and has continued with captain promotion process as scheduled. Approximately 20 candidates submitted applications and took a written exam to qualify for one open captain position. It's kind of interesting, we're out doing the spider today and trying to learn how to do that, and one of chief's firemen realized that if you don't have a bag there when the sand comes, you get sand all over yourself, so he's learning how to do a flood fight. And I think Grubb told him deliberately to turn up the spider machine, so we had sand all over for a while there, but the machines are working and we're ready for tomorrow. The Fargo Cast Public Health Women, Infants and Children Supplemental Nutrition Program is collaborating with the Fargo Public Library and United Way in March and April to promote reading to children. Library staff will visit the WIC clinic to assist clients in signing up for library cards and the United Way to provide books for the clients in the waiting room. Desi, I wanted to thank your team, came up and helped us with the initial sandbags today, and the only thing I'd advise them next time is not to wear nice clothes, so it was an interesting way which you delicately do sandbags. Inspections. A house at 1101 Seventh Street North, which has been deemed dangerous building at recent city commission meetings, has been taken down. And Bruce reported to us that new owner has plans to redevelop the lot, which will bring new life to the corner of North Fargo, building a new home. Training in the new inspections department software continues for all city departments. The inspection department is still on track to implement the new software in the next six to eight weeks. The city is looking forward to this new improved system that will allow more access for the public to plan, review, permitting, and inspections. It will simplify that process right first, make it easier for people to get into the system. We're modernizing. Library. I always love the library. March is the National Noodle Month, and the library is hosting several noodle-ific craft and activity sessions for kids of all ages this week. The sessions are a partnership of Dakota Growers Pasta Company. April is the National Poetry Month, and the library will host a Poetry Day for April 6, in which the feature will be reading and question and answer service session with North Dakota poet laureate Laurie Wallwode, and the favorite poetry reading event at 3:00 PM on Poetry Day, April 6. Planning. We're all having fun with this. Block 9 Precast is nearing its final stages of assembly, and if any of you haven't seen it, it's the parking garage that's going up by Precast's mat. To date, the crane has been working with the footprint of the ramp, assembling the full height bay at a time and sequencing its way from south to north. The sequencing will eventually require the last bay of the ramp to be assembled with the crane outside the ramp footprint. Starting Monday, April 1, the crane will be set on Third Avenue North to complete the work. This will close the east half of Third Avenue North for 40 days. Vehicle will be maintained access between Broadway and the alley, and the north sidewalk will remain open for pedestrians. Parking in the ramp is available this summer when times are busy, so we're excited about this moving on time. And there's an informational display in all public library locations on planning activities for the Civic Plaza. The city is seeking a public input as a master plan for the areas surrounding the new city halls analyzed for future community interests and needs. There's also an online survey to fill out, FargoNorthDakota.gov/FargoCivicCenter, for people to put input in. And if people don't know that, that's all the area outside this building where we have a parking lot right now, and between the library and the civic center. So there's great ideas out there of what we should do with that area, green space, we have different things in it to engage the public. So very much want the public's input on this, and we think it'll be something to enhance the city. Police. The police department held a swearing-in and promotion recognition ceremony recently to welcome officers Nate Slack and Jett Swantek, and to congratulate Officer Kristy Jacobson on her promotion to a sergeant. The police department has also been putting together its flood ops assignments and emergency management program, as well as the Flood Tactical Operations Center. Command staff have identified assignments for Dyke and Labby patrols, traffic control points, sandbag delivery escorts, and more. The police department's intel department gave a presentation last week to city leaders regarding intelligent-led policing to show how effective the department's analysis and targeting efforts that have to be made. It's amazing how much work is done, not in a patrol car, but back inside the department, identifying areas of need and what we need to do for that. And so it's a fantastic way to see how clever our police are. Officer Jessica White is named United Way's 3535 program, which focuses on empowering female leaders in the community through development and leadership and networking. The city is proud of Jessica and her acceptance and involvement in the program. She's going to do great things. Lieutenant Travis Sefanowski has been accepted to attend the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. This is a big deal. Less than a tenth, the 1 percent, of law enforcement gets selected to attend the academy, and it is a great leadership and command college for further development of leaders. Congratulations to Lieutenant Sefanowski, which, and I'm sure it's going to be a great experience for him. I think Chief Todd went through that as well at one time. Livability.com has ranked Fargo as the number 11th in their list of top 100 best places to live in America for 2019. More than 1,000 millennials across the country were surveyed on what matters most to them when making relocation decisions. The top responses were affordability and job opportunities. The site called Fargo surprisingly cool with affordable and easy-to-find housing, a booming startup scene, and a hell and hearty economy. Fargo's median home value is $215,000. Other regional cities that made the top 20 this year include Bismarck, Sioux Falls, Rochester, and Minneapolis. So we're doing pretty well. People like the place. Moving on. Do I have motion to approve the order of agenda, adding an extra item at the end of the regular agenda to award a bit of rental of emergency flood pump, and moving item 15 from consent agenda to regular agenda for further discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11, 2019 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 31 excluding item 15, which is moved to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
So item 32, applications for abatement or refund of taxes, numbers 4481, 4482, 4483, for the 2018 year filed by Dave Sholley for the reduction of value of property from $191,000 to $115,000, reduction of properties in all these areas, which is being denied by the assessment department. Ben Hushka will explain the areas and what the explanation is.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'll just briefly go over the information I have on all three of these abatements. The 346 27th Circle and the... both 27th Circle properties are virtually the same. So what we've provided to you is information about the valuation that we have arrived at on these properties, how we got to those values. For 346, this property was reappraised. This pasture, actually both the 27th Circle were reappraised through a land reappraisal of all land between Main Avenue and I-94. On this particular property, we had $2.50 a square foot for some time, and now with the reappraisal, we're at $4.50 on the appealed subject parcels. And that's based on sales that we have received. And in your original write-up, it referred to red text, so if you read it before, the rendering of the PDFs that got to you didn't recognize the red, so I gave you some additional information. But in that, we have a listing of land sales that we worked with, and that is how we arrived at the $4.50 land in this particular area. One of the sales, or one of the properties in this list of sales did resell within the same year for an indicated increase of 16 percent in that year for the land in that area. Also, you can see at the bottom of this table, there is a current active listing at $6.72 a square foot in that particular part of town. On the bottom table of page 10, the... excuse me, page 9. We did find some sales on 27th Circle, but they were quite old, so basically what we looked at here was any resales to see if there was any appreciation indicated. Two properties did resell with an indicated annual appreciation rate of 4.2 percent annually on one and 2.3 on the other. And that's just kind of looking for everything we have to give us an indication of what the land should be worth, and if the $4.50 is accurate for a current land value out there. And we do feel that it is. So on the bottom of page 10, you can see the model of the land in that area. The blue area is where the two subject properties are. Excuse me. And that's... land is valued at between $4 and $4.50 per square foot. As we move down to the other colors, you can see the land goes up to as high as 575 until you get to a couple blocks off of 13th Avenue. 334 27th Circle is exactly the same, that's these two sites right up here in the sort of cul-de-sac, except that on 334, there was an improvement, 1,600 square foot quonset that was moved onto the property in 2012. So there is a building value. We have a flat $10 a square foot on that building, so that would be the only difference in value of these two parcels. The land value is the same, it's just that building. On the top of page 16 of the packet for 346, there was a letter that Mr. Sholley sent us indicating that he offered $80,000 to the railroad for some abandoned railroad property. That would be the green area on this map. That is $3.94. The railroad did not accept that offer. They counter-offered at $96,000, which is $4.67 a square foot, which is pretty close to what our current land value is on these properties. So if you have any questions on the two commercial properties, I could try and answer them, or I could give you the information on the house as well, and then let the applicant respond, if you want to do it that way.
Commissioners, any questions? Go to the houses next, Ben.
Okay. 3510 Park Avenue South. It was reappraised in 2016 in a mass reappraisal effort at $326,700, and subsequently, that property was indexed for market changes or for changes in sale prices, both in 2017 and 2018, at 3 percent annually to arrive at the current value of $346,600. In the packet, we do have a copy of the cost approach that we arrived at back in 2016, and we do have a list of sales that we did send Mr. Sholley. You can see on that list of sales that only one of them is at a lower square foot price of what it sold for than the square foot price we have on Mr. Sholley's property, and the one that is a lower square foot price has no basement. All the other properties, including Mr. Sholley's, have a full basement. The market approach that we included in the packet was kind of a tool that we built in the office. The market approach is to find comparable sales similar to the subject property, make adjustments for the differences off the sale prices. Well, the tool that's in the information packet that I gave you is similar to that process, but rather than using sale prices, we're using the value that we have on these similar properties to see if we are equitable in the value of the subject property. So doing that particular comparable analysis to see if our value is equitable, it does indicate that we are in line. What that report says is that based on our value of others indicates that we should be at $350,800 on the subject property, and our value is $346,600, which is quite close. I did run a current actual market appraisal analysis against sales, which does the true market comparison approach using sales of properties, and based on those sales, that indicates that as of today, the sales say that our value on the subject property should be $384,900. So it indicates that we're actually a little low at the current 2018 value. So with that, that's all the information I have for you, unless you have any other questions, or we could hear from...
Mr. Sholley here.
I believe so.
Mr. Sholley, you want to take the podium and plead your case, please?
I'm David Sholley, here on the appeal, and when we got the notice on the taxes, we were quite shocked, because one lot went up 74 percent, and the other one went up 85 percent. We thought it was a mistake, so we checked with the office, and they said, "No, that's right." And I thought, "Okay, maybe it's a mathematical error. Maybe the adding machine didn't work on the day it was calculated." They said, "No, that's not the case." You would think that if the taxes almost doubled in one year, that it would raise some eyebrows, or someone would notice it, but apparently that's just a normal day of activity at that office. Well, anyway, they said, "Well, you know, we use comparisons to calculate your values." And they sent us a letter, I think he mentioned it there. Here it is, with various other sites that are examples supposedly comparable to our site. However, I couldn't find any similarities, because the other sites have high visibility. We don't. The other sites are unknown streets, like Main Avenue. Ours is on 27th Circle South. Who knows where that is? Nobody. The other sites have electricity. We don't. The other sites have water and sewer. We don't. The other sites have sidewalks and entrances. We don't. The other sites have parking. We don't. The other sites have grass, lawn, landscaping. We don't. But ironically, all that is not the topper. The topper is that when a neighbor built a short time ago to build a building, Oi Construction, they were told that they had to excavate their dirt and bring in sand at a cost of $90,000, and the reasoning was that the existing soil was all fill, and you had to have the sand and gravel to have a stable base. Then our next-door neighbor, Pat Larkin, he was going to build last year. He was told he had to do the same thing, so he canceled his building plan, so he didn't even build. So the bottom line is, even if you find a comparable lot that is similar to ours, we got a $90,000 negative, because we'd have to go through all the trouble of excavating and bringing in the sand in order to build. We don't even have any plans to build largely for that reason. Okay, then, this experience basically made me lose faith in the whole process. And so that brought me to the house. I looked at the house, and basically I found the same things there. Again, the assessed value is very high, and again, we got a letter saying, "Well, this is..." Again, it's just comparable to other properties. And they provided a list, and so I went through the list, and I couldn't find any similarities. For example, one of the sites, 3757 Dorothea Court, they have stainless steel appliances. They got a three-season enclosed porch. They got a pergola. They got garage floor drains and heater in the garage. We don't have any of that. Okay, then, 3505 Woodbury Court, they got granite countertops. They got stainless steel appliances. They got wood laminate floors. They got a security system. We don't have any of that. Then 4101 Ashton Court, they got stainless steel appliances too. They got a rock fireplace. They got porch entrances. They got a security system. Again, we don't have any of that. So, one other thing. Trulia and Zillow, they're the national companies that track real estate values and trends. They have the most extensive listing of activity anywhere in the country. They put the value at our house at 323 and 326. So the number on our appeal is right in there at 325. So if the facts mean anything, our appeal is valid, and it should be approved. Thank you.
Ben, do you want to respond to any of that? Water, sewer, not being on the lot, does that make any difference?
Well, services are available to the lot. I mean, they're... they can be provided to the sites. You can see right across 27th Circle, there are properties that have services to them. They're available. It's not that the services aren't running down those streets.
Any questions by commission? Mr. Pepcorn?
So Ben, would you explain, obviously, we've had big jumps in other parts, would you explain, was it... is part of the reason because you went in and reassessed some of these areas, and that's so it could have been assessed low for the past few years, and that was part of the reason?
Right. Yeah, like I say, we were at $2.50 a square foot on all of that land in that triangle above where the subject, and up to not Main Avenue, but the railroad track run just south of Main Avenue. And when we did our land reappraisal this year, which we've been doing all over town, we did south of I-94 a couple years ago, we just found that the sales indicated we were quite low.
Commissioner Gerg?
How long were they at 2.54? How long... When was the last time this was appraised before this current?
The land? Um, I would guess that whole area, probably we're talking six, seven years.
I just have a question and a comment. Ben, so is that calling some of our prior deliberations over this issue, one of the areas that we've tried to be cognizant of and improve upon is the time between assessment, and you just said six or seven years. Is that typical?
Well, for updating land, that's probably not unusual, because this isn't an area that has a lot of vacant land. Usually where you see land values changing is in developing areas. Of course, there is some vacant land here in some development, and some sites have been purchased. That's one of the reasons that we had to go back to older sales to get some specific sales in this area. You'll notice most of the sales are at least three, four years old, so it's probably activity that has happened recently that wasn't happening for a number of years. And I'll just point out that when we do a land reappraisal, we're obviously doing all of the properties, including the improved sites. And what we do when we get the land to where it needs to be, then we look at the overall value of land and improvements, and in some cases, there is, you know, a usable site with buildings and a business on it. We appraise improved properties. There's a lot more sales on improved properties, so when we do a land adjustment, we may net zero the change in land by taking it off the building, because we feel the total site as improved did not change just because our land value happened to be a little bit low. Our cost models were probably putting a little too much value on the buildings to get that total improved sale price. That's why the vacant land, that's all that's there, so they're going to see the huge increases.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Just a reminder, if I may, you are... your action today is sending a recommendation to the county. The county commission actually acts on these abatements. They are obligated to consider your action, but it is up to them to make the...
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we had a decision here two months ago that passed that we changed...
Right.
...opposite of your recommendation.
Correct.
And the county did not accept our position, and they did not accept the appeal. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Make the recommended motion. Sir, a second. I'll second it. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearings. Proposal to alter and expand the Renaissance Zone boundary from 47 blocks to 48 and a half blocks. May I explain by Nicole Redfield?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you tonight, we have two requests. These don't come along very often, but just so happens, we've had two requests for adding blocks in the Renaissance Zone boundary, and these were presented to the Renaissance Zone Authority, and both were recommended unanimously for approval. I'll maybe explain both of them here, and it can be a unified motion if you want. The first one is, basically, one block is located between Sixth Avenue North and Oak Street North, and it's surrounded by the railroad and Wildflower Grove. The applicant, or the owner, is LHS Investments and has plans to construct multifamily development on the proposed Renaissance Zone Block 54, and that's this kind of outlier off to the east. The second block is located at two... is being requested by 201 Hospitality LLC, and this block is located between Second Avenue North, Third Avenue North, and see how much between Fifth Street and Fourth Street North. They have plans to remodel the Radisson Hotel, and the block also includes our, the city-owned parking ramp, but that's this block here, number 55 here. And it's a little unique. We're in the last year of a five-year plan. Every five years, we propose a plan update. It's required by law, and it was a little unique. This time around, the Renaissance Zone Authority left open. We didn't designate all of our blocks, and instead, because we had a number of potential projects, we kind of left it at a first-come, first-served basis. So based on that, we can only... we have a cap of 49 blocks, and so this would bring us to 48 and a half blocks, and... but it was recommended unanimously from the authority. Be glad to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Gerg?
So 54 there is kind of out by itself. I was under the impression that the RZ ought to be congruent, ought to be touching, couldn't be out somewhere else.
We can have one block as a satellite block.
How far can it be from the rest of them? Is there a limit?
There's no limit.
So for me, I'd like to see, if we're going to move something that's not part of the current RZ area, why not move it somewhere that's not downtown? Let's move it to a different area, like Midtown in South Fargo, where we can see if maybe that's the next Renaissance Zone area. Maybe it works down there, maybe it doesn't, and that could be our little pilot to try something there, instead of packing it all downtown when we don't have to. I also don't like the idea of just adding new blocks. We should be starting to rear back on incentive... back on incentives, not expand them further. This, along with our new guidelines for tax review, is giving signals that the City of Fargo is going to start getting more and more incentives, not less and less. So, for that, I won't vote for it.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Nicole, on that question, you were requested by the owner of Block Fifty-four for this, is that right? Would somebody have to, if it's outside the Renaissance Zone, have to request Renaissance Zone?
Correct.
And is there anything on how, or the stock of what's on there, or length, the time it's been there, or anything like that?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
Is there any timeframe in which the building that sits on the property has to have? When Renaissance Zone came along, could it be, you could tear down a building and build something new?
No, but we do close the block. So, once the project has come through, we close the block and reassign that block somewhere else. And so, every five years is really a chance for us to kind of, we go and do a full inventory of.
So, when it's done to Commissioner Garrick's request, we could have that block come back and go somewhere else in the city?
Yes.
Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, so Nicole, we did have this in mind, so like Tony, like Commissioner Garrick, on South University Drive, if they, if they come up with an idea, we will have that option in the future. So, we, I do hope that happens, what Commissioner Garrick talked about, that we start having Renaissance Zones in other parts of town. I do hope, so that option is still available, that isn't going to exclude this, correct?
Correct.
And so, it is, and this has been a great thing, and I do think there's other parts of town that could benefit from this. And so, I just wanted to make it clear that this isn't going to exclude, remove them, they could still, that's still a potential thing. But on the flip side, we want to have activity, and so that's, both these projects are going to go once we give them, if we approve. So, I think that's important too. Thank you.
Is that a motion as well?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed Renaissance Boundary Adjustment as recommended by the RZA and staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Nicole, I'm just curious about, and I don't have a lot of experience sitting here with Renaissance Zone expansions. Typically, does the city decide they want an area developed, or does it typically happen where a developer says, I would like to develop, and could you please incorporate this tax incentive into that neighborhood?
So, I don't have the legislative language right in front of me, but basically, in your packet, I believe, is a block-by-block layout, and, and so, what, as part of the five-year plan, we list out all of the number of blocks. The Renaissance Zone Authority actually does a pretty extensive analysis of, and working with planning staff, and the commission designates what those future land uses could be, if they're ripe for redevelopment, of, you know, basically looking at putting together a package. That master plan gets approved by the state. It's also, goes in front of the school board and the county as well, as part of that process. And so, in answer to your question, Commissioner, we do have to have a master plan to go along with this recommendation, and as Commissioner Pepcorn mentioned, we've known about this potential block for quite some time, and there is also kind of a handful of blocks in the surrounding downtown area, or in the surrounding core neighborhood area, where we had heard about projects. And there is an extensive public output, outreach process as part of the five-year plan update as well.
If I might ask one more question, Mayor, and then I'll conclude. The Radisson was, I want to say built in mid-seventies, early seventies, do we, and I think it just came off the Tiff District recently, how many years has it not been, or how many years has it been on the tax rolls?
I would not know that question offhand, that answer offhand.
Gilmar apparently does, he's coming up.
Mr. Chair, can I add one more thing while he's coming up? So, the Renaissance Zone, you can, that block, you can only use it one time. It's not like you can have multiple uses, it's just eligible to be used one time.
Five years.
Yep.
Mr. Gilmar?
Yeah, the Radisson came back on in the tax rolls, I believe it was in two thousand and seven, so it's been, originally, I believe the structure was built in nineteen eighty-three.
That's your question?
It does.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Grinberg?
Just to add, as one of the six sponsors of the Renaissance legislation of nineteen ninety-nine, we morphed this against Michigan law, and it was repurposing, you know, areas of aging infrastructure downtowns, specifically in Michigan's case, and brownfields, and we felt that that would work well in Fargo, and it has. You know, I think if we were going to go far from downtown, it would require a revisit with the legislative intent, per say Thirty-second Avenue, for example, Commissioner Garrick, or up in Nineteenth Avenue North, that infrastructure isn't as dated as it was with the intent around repurposing, you know, the downtown area. And then as well, you know, the Opportunity Zones that were just passed here a year ago by Congress, that allows, we designated areas as well similar to downtown, and maybe Jim can comment on that zone just as a refresher, but some of that does stretch into neighborhoods as well, I think to the north and to the south.
There are five census districts, and the City of Fargo's Opportunity Zone extends as far north as Twelfth Avenue North, and to just south of the downtown, from the river, really out, almost out to the edge of the city, so includes some of the industrial park areas as well as the older neighborhoods to the west of downtown, all the way out to the west Fargo Boundary.
So, in theory or practice, then, when that energizes, that could be a tool as well to, you know, leapfrog outside of the downtown area, an area we designated here probably a year ago, I recall.
There are some different investment groups that are putting together opportunity funds to help fund projects in these older areas, redevelopment projects.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious, you know, I see some folks in the audience that are from that neighborhood, Oak Grove, I'm looking at that project there, number fifty-four, and my sense is they've shown up and objected to that project. I know there was a public hearing, I believe, or a public neighborhood engagement recently on that. Do we, are we okay with the neighborhoods now? Do they want this project? Do we know, or I, this is where I'm kind of trying to sort this out, is, I'm a real advocate for Renaissance Zones, but I also want it to fit with what the neighbors want. Where do we sit with them with that project?
Well, we did recently just approve a plat that's been through your review, I believe, and the zoning, we believe a zoning application will be coming forward. There has been a zoning application on this site with a PUD that's been previously approved, but we know from the applicant that that is going to be adjusted. There was a neighborhood meeting last Thursday, I believe, I think there was about twenty or thirty people showed up. We're still processing those review comments. The zoning application hasn't actually become a real application yet, so I don't have a whole lot of detail yet for that. But we are trying to go ahead, the, half of this property is already zoned downtown mixed use, so they're allowed by right, at least on the eastern half of the property, to do that, and on the western half of the property is zoned MR3, and so it's allowed by right to do MR3 project as well.
This is just really the Renaissance question, John, the zoning and such, the project we can look at, that'd be a different vote, I think, at that time. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Aye.
Garrick?
Oh.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item B, plat of the Meyer Second Edition, one-one-three-five, one-one-four-one, and one-two-oh-one, Forty-ninth Avenue South, approval recommended by Planning Commission. Donald Crest to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Crest of the Department of Planning and Development, I'll be presenting the next Item thirty-three B is a major plat of the Meyer Second Edition, including a subdivision waiver for cul-de-sac dimensions and a drainage easement. As you see here, the project site is located as the mayor stated along Forty-ninth Avenue South. Here's the property here, here's the levee that's there now, and the river, and University Drive. The, that's the aerial, I took a site photo this morning, so you can see it from the ground, just a little, make it a little more real here for you. Just standing here, this is the existing cul-de-sac, and you see the levee wraps around here, and this is the area of the future lot. The zoning on this property is SR2, single-dwelling residential, no zone change is proposed. The plat of this approximately seven-tenths of an acre property will create one lot, that'd be Lot One. Surrounding vacant lots are owned by the city. This area here, the cul-de-sac and adjacent right-of-way, will be dedicated to the city by this plat. Regarding that cul-de-sac, the plat includes a subdivision waiver for cul-de-sac dimensions. As you know, our code has certain prescribed sizes for cul-de-sacs when projects are platted. As you can see in the previous photographs, this is an existing cul-de-sac, and is built on the city-owned lot. This plat, as I said, will dedicate the existing cul-de-sac. The dimensions are a little smaller than what we would normally require, there's more detail on that in your staff report. However, since it's an existing cul-de-sac, these city departments have reviewed it and determined that in this situation, in this location, the current dimensions are acceptable. But the subdivision waiver is in there to just account for this difference. Also included in your packet for this project is a drainage easement for the property. This is something that is done by a separate document to allow a little flexibility in the future as that property develops, prepared by the City Engineering Department and the City Attorney's Office. At the July third, twenty eighteen Planning Commission meeting, several of the neighbors did speak there. Their comments are summarized in your staff report. They seem particularly concerned about the future use of the property. Right now, this property is zoned SR2, again, single-dwelling residential, only allows single-family homes there, or does not allow multifamily residential, is a better way to say that, but the neighbors were concerned that there could be a future apartment building on this, not with this zoning, there could not be. No comments have been received since the mailing for the City Commission hearing. The applicant, the City of Fargo, is with us tonight. Orbom, or Mr.? No comment. The Planning Commission's recommendation is shown on the screen and stated in your staff report. The suggested approval motion, please note, includes the plat, subdivision waiver, and the drainage easement. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
I'll just explain the City of Fargo, this is a flood buyout, is it not, and we're just trying to plot it so it could be used in the future?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, we're basically preparing at some point if somebody wanted to put a home there?
That would be the, what the zoning would allow, sir, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public who would like to speak regarding this property, please?
I'm the neighbor in twelve-oh-nine to the west. Now, the drainage easement that you put on it, that's my main question, is that the drainage in the back of the lot has to be maintained?
Right. I don't have the wording of it on the screen here. Gentlemen, are you familiar with that?
Could you give your name, please?
Brian Johnson.
Thank you, Brian.
That was one of the last remaining, especially now this year again, we finally have the drainage moving again, and I don't want a lot development and plug it up.
Okay.
That presents a lot of problems with new neighbors.
Commissioners, if I just may add, Mr. Johnson, we spoke at the Planning Commission, sir, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, I remember you, from there. And at the time, there was discussion with City Engineer Brenda DeRig about such a drainage easement, and she said we would create a separate document for that, and that is included in the packet that the Commissioners have, that would account for your, for your drainage of keeping, I think it's a ten-foot wide area clear, I'm not looking at the document there.
Yeah, it's something in that ten, fifteen, twenty feet along the bank, that just can't be built up.
Right. And as the City Engineer explained at the Planning Commission meeting, they, it's on a separate document as opposed to being locked onto the plat, because there can, that can, if they need to move it a little bit one way or the other for future development, that's more easily done with a separate easement document than having to replat the whole thing, but you can, it still will be the same area. And, Mr. Nakmus, do you have any comment on that?
It would just be if any fill is brought in, dirt work done, if that's filled in, our drainage goes to pot.
Yes, sir, we understand.
Tony Garrick says he's got something on his document.
It's that separate document, ten, about ten feet, and, yeah, so it's in, it's in here, if you're concerned about.
Tom, you want to comment to that, please?
Yeah, again, my understanding is it's just to protect, if a single-family residence was built on that parcel, that it just provides that buffer to maintain future drainage.
So, you don't want to be flooded, like we all don't?
Right, well, we spent, we spent many years pumping our backyards out until the city came in, removed the houses, regraded the lawn, the yard, that acreage, and I actually went out and had the last grade guy, he could see where the problem was, and he graded it for me, right then and there, since he was there, and it's been working fine. I don't want that messed up again.
Okay.
I don't want to go back to two sump pumps in my backyard, because I have no place to pump it to the front anymore since we lost our ditch.
Yes.
So, it's, and one more question, you know, you keep saying it's an existing cul-de-sac, but only since the levee went in, and the street was rebuilt.
Yes, sir.
So, that's, it's existing, but it's a small existing, and if snow gets to be worse than this year, this year wasn't that much snow, there's going to be a problem where you put that snow, because right now, a lot of it goes onto that lot. Gets pushed back onto that lot on the cul-de-sac, so if, that, that front yard will no longer be available with someone else.
Well, Ben Dow's here, and he'll take that down on his notes, I know he'll figure something out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioners, note that there are, you know, these are city-owned lots here and here too, so perhaps that'd be an area that the snow could, that are not being developed at this time.
Is anyone else wish to speak to this? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item C, Providence at Prairie Farms Edition, approval recommended by the Planning Commission, zoning change from a single-dwelling residential to a conditional overlay with single-dwelling residential for SR4, single-dwelling residential with conditional overlay to a public and institutional conditional overlay. First reading of the rezoning ordinance and a plat of the Providence at Prairie Farms Edition. Donald Crest to explain as well.
Yes, sir, thank you. As the mayor stated, this is the Providence at Prairie Farms Edition, it's a location here, this is Thirty-first Street South, up here, a little bit off the map, is Fifty-second Avenue South, down here, a little bit off the map, is Sixty-fourth Avenue South, and this is County Drain Fifty-three. This is the aerial view here, these are the existing lots that were created by the Prairie Farms plat in twenty fourteen. We have some ground views here, this is facing south, here's, here's the street out here, Thirty-first Street, here's the drain over here, then this is standing in the opposite corner, looking back northeasterly, so those were taken in May of last year. The plat proposes to take those larger lots that we just look at and create sixteen lots along here, fifteen of them here are residential lots, and it's Lot Sixteen back here is a park lot to accommodate access to the park-owned property here. It's approximately a four-point-four-seven acre plat. These lots will, even though they front Thirty-first Street, will have a, an internal street, this has been slightly modified here, but as you see, the product, the housing product here is intended to be attached housing, that's what these cross-hatched areas are, and then they will be accessed by an internal driveway, which will just have two accesses off Thirty-first, here and here, so that we don't have fifteen driveways right on top of each other onto Thirty-first. And then this will just be a private driveway. It'll not be a separate lot owned by the HOA, as you see, the driveway is on everyone's lot, so there'll be an agreement provided by the developer for them to maintain that private driveway. The zone, and then the park lot is, is over here, and that will be conveyed to the Fargo Park District. The zoning is currently SR4 with a conditional overlay, which is an additional restriction that is sometimes put on zones, it was created when the plat was originally approved, and that current conditional overlay does not allow attached housing, that is, the town home-like style that is proposed here. So, the zoning for the residential lots is to propose to be changed from SR4 with the conditional overlay to SR4 still with a conditional overlay, except removing the prohibition against attached housing. And then, the other part of the zone change is to change from SR4 to PI, public and institutional, for that park lot, again, that's the appropriate zoning for a park-owned lot, and there is a conditional overlay on that to restrict uses to what actually would be appropriate for a park in, in that lot. The public and institutional zone actually includes a lot of uses, including manufacturing, and that, you know, Sandbag Central is in the PI zone, and so we would want to not have any sort of heavy-duty manufacturing and so on back there. So, it's just restricted to parks and open space and recreational space for that use. No comments have been received from the public resulting from this most recent notification. The applicant, Michael Dmitrovich of Urban Concept, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Your packet includes a zone change ordinance prepared by the City Engineers' Office. The Planning Commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Don. Does anyone present who wishes to speak to this? Anyone present who wishes to speak? You're excited about the project, though, right?
Really excited about the project and hardly wait.
Okay. When will it be done?
Well, let's say, why don't we say, when will it begin? It will begin, we're hoping, within six weeks. We'll start. We'll start on the south side of the property. The homes that we really looked at after looking at the Vision 230 or the Gold 230 was to try to bring the cost of the specials from 31st Street is very expensive. And so what we tried to do is take a nice, single-family home and would rather, we would rather have it attached, keep the cost of specials low for the people, but bring up property value. So we're looking at, the beginning market on these are $599.9, so they're a nice-looking, I think they're going to be a nice asset to that entire area, so we're excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't want to speak, but you got up here, so.
What's that?
I said you didn't want to speak, but I brought you up here, so that's good.
Well, thank you.
We've been wanting that area to fill in, so it's very good to come up with a project. Thank you. Closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
You have a question, I'll make the motion, and I'll, if there's a second, I'll ask the question.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mike, for clarifying that because my memory recalled that the special balances on those larger lots were one of the driving factors with, you know, kind of making a new model work. Don, we, Planning Commission passed this in July. Why are we, what took so long to us to get, for us to get here?
We had to work out, there was a rather complex getting this drainage to work on the park lot. So that was, that's probably the easiest way to say that. Is that okay, Mr. Dmitrovich, there, that we had to?
Nice way to say it.
Yes, we had to work that out with the applicant's engineer, which I believe was Houston Engineering, and our engineering department. So we've just been working that out, and it's finally come to pass.
We've been working diligently for months, then.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item D, Airport First Edition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 2/5/19. Zoning change to limited industrial to limited commercial. First reading of rezoning. Don LaCrest as well.
Thank you, sir. We'll have some location here. This is the subject property. This is University Drive, oop, went too fast there. University Drive, 19th Avenue North, north side project here for a change here. This is the airport off to the side over here. This, for many years, from the 1980s through at least late 90s, was known as the Busy Bubbles Car Wash and Laundromat. So all of you who've lived on the north side, I see Commissioner Garrick nodding there. Probably were familiar with that site. There are a lot of things around here, a variety of things around here. This project is close to NDSU and NDSCS right across the street here. And then in this area, this Airport First Edition, there are a large number of items or different uses. Most of them are contractors or contractor-related businesses, but there's also the Red Cross is there. There's some medical businesses and some just regular business offices. And this, of course, is the NDSU housing project here along 19th Avenue, which I built, was, believe was built in the early 2000s. The applicant, here's what the building looks like on the ground. I took these this morning here. This is the view from 21st Avenue, and this is what is the front here from 12th Avenue. The applicant is proposing to add two stories to the building to look like that, so you can see where the old car wash entrances were. And on the second two stories, they're proposing to have residences for apartments on each level. So again, this might be housing convenient to the folks who live around there as well as to the schools there. The zoning on this property is limited industrial, which would not allow residential use there. So the applicant proposes to change it to limited commercial, which would allow residential use. And again, that's what this property across the street here, where the NDSU building is. To have residential in the limited commercial zone would require a conditional use permit. At the February 5th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the commission approved a conditional use permit that is contingent on your commission's approval of the zone change. It just sits out there and will not become effective unless there's a zone change. The conditions of that CUP included that the maximum density shall not exceed that of the MR3 zone, which is 24 dwelling units per acre, which it makes, a minimum of 30% of the lot shall remain as open space, and bicycle parking facilities shall be included as part of the site. Your commission is not taking any action on the CUP. That's already been taken care of by the Planning Commission, but that's just for your reference. And also for your reference, this is in a part of town that has something that's very rare. It's a set of covenants that the city is party to that come from the original plat in 1969, the Airport First Edition covenants. Those covenants originally prohibited any residential use in this zone. There is a process provided for in the covenants to modify those, and the applicant did go through that process, which involves contacting all the property owners, getting a certain percentage of signatures, bringing that before the Planning Commission, and having the Planning Commission review and verify that, which they also did at the February 5th meeting. So they have completed that process. Again, your commission is not taking action on any covenant-related matters. It's just for your information, that there's several pieces to a seemingly simple thing here. The applicant, Architect Richard Myers of YHR Partners, is with us tonight, and they wish to address the commission. And the Planning Commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Sir, anyone present who wishes to speak to the commission? Any Commissioners have any questions? No. Sir, anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? Tony, is it going to be a nice addition up there?
School spot.
Yeah. Roll call vote.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item E, Continued from 2/4/22/19. Application Pro Delicious to Pro Delicious Class H Alcoholic Beverage License 629 North Civic Avenue North. So that's delayed, Steve, right?
Correct. The applicant needed to get a building permit taken out and secured and had some concerns with Health Department also. And so once he gets a little bit farther down the line, he'll come back to Liquor Control, and we'll act on it then.
Sir, motion to continue the hearing?
Aye, so move.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item G, Transfer an FAA Alcoholic Beverage License from Transcendental Hospitality Group to Four Point by Sheridan to Fargo South Hospitality Four Point by Sheridan at 5064 23rd Avenue South. Steve Spregg to explain.
This is a case where the business itself is changing hands, and so the license, they've applied to transfer the license with it. The FAA license is a restaurant license, coincides with the restaurant that's in the hotel. And gone through the background check, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this license? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Aye, so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item H, Transfer of a Class B Limited Alcoholic Beverage License from Lake Mode Liquors Incorporated to Lake Mode Liquors to Cashwise Liquors, doing business as Hornbacher's Wine and Spirits, to be located at 42nd 65 45th Street South, Suite 121. Steve Spregg to address.
And if you'll remember, Commissioners, a couple of months ago, this issue came to you, and there was a request to modify the B-limited license so that somebody could own more than one B-limited. That ordinance did pass. It went through the normal process, and now we're acting on the transfer of the liquor license. And so this is a business that is changing hands, and it's going from, was a local owner to Cashwise, doing business as Hornbacher's Wine and Liquors. I don't know if there's any questions. It does come to you with a recommendation of approval. There were no items on the background check.
Gentlemen, present who wish to speak to this liquor license transfer? Is anyone who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Aye, so move.
Second. Move and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item H, Transfer of a Class B Limited Alcoholic Beverage License from Lake Mode Liquors Incorporated to Lake Mode Liquors to Cashwise Liquors, doing business as Hornbacher's Wine and Liquors. I don't know if there's any questions. It does come to you with a recommendation of approval. There were no items on the background check. Gentlemen, present who wish to speak to this liquor license transfer? Is anyone who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Aye, so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Do you have my recommendations for appointments to following boards, Airport Authority and Fargo Dome Authority? Do I have a motion?
So move.
For a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Those Fargo Dome, right?
Fargo Dome and Airport Authority.
All together?
Yes.
Okay. Just a comment, I did have a nice conversation with Mr. Angan on Friday, and felt comfortable with the questions and his answers, so.
Thank you. Can I, Garrick?
So with the Airport Authority, over the last, is it three years, or is it four? We've had 70% turnover? Is that true?
It's true.
Seems like a lot.
60%, because there's only five members.
True, fair enough, math. I don't know, I think, I know nothing, problem with the person that you recommended. I read about him, and I just think that we have turnover that quickly, you're losing some of your knowledge that you have there. Nothing says that that's a bad or a good thing, but I think we need to be thoughtful going forward with the rest of the members there of how quickly we turn over them.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Resolution opposing House concurrent resolution 3037 nullifying North Dakota's ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. Many of us heard about this. The people have been emailing in and getting our attentions. Commissioner Strand took the lead on this. John, I'll let you start to explain this.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. And I had some outreach from some citizens in the community to ask us to take a stand on this, and they're in the audience. If Arlette and Karen would like to address us, I'd sure welcome it, and I know you have information to share. So Karen Stoker and Arlette Preston and...
Karen, I'll tell you, the new rules are over here. Sorry. That's so staff can jump up and tell you anything, questions, so. Well, yeah, but we're a new commission chamber, so it's a change, so. But you have more space to put your notes down, then.
Well, Mayor Mahoney, Commissioners, good evening. I'm glad that the Women's History Month is in such good company with the noodle crafts at the library. I, too, am a fan of the library, so it's good to be here. As John Strand said, my name is Karen Stoker. I've been a longtime citizen of Fargo. I'm a business owner and a mother of three North Dakotans. Equality of rights under the law should not be denied by the United States or by any state on account of sex. That is as simple as the Equal Rights Amendment states. By 1977, North Dakota was one of 35 states to have ratified the Equal Rights Amendment. Two weeks ago, the State House of Representatives passed a resolution nullifying our state's ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. Women don't have equal rights. We don't have legal rights that are afforded to race or religion. We have issues with pay parity, violence against women, sexual discrimination are still persistent, and again, without the equal enforcement or the strict legal scrutiny that is afforded to others. Millions of hours over 100 years have been dedicated to fighting for equal for equal. It's unacceptable that this has not been included in our Constitution, and it's reprehensible that our state would nullify the ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment.
Arlette Preston, 505 North Broadway. Just wanted to talk to this from more of an employer's perspective. As an individual who hires a number of women and men, this action really is very unnecessary in that the deadline for ratifying the ERA is 40 years past, so I'm not certain why the legislature felt like they had to take this up at this point. The problem is, it sends a bad message to anybody who is thinking about relocating or researching our community. It just is sending a bad message that we're not moving forward. So we'd just encourage you to consider passing this resolution and making a statement to the legislature as well as the governor, although this does not, as I understand, go to the governor for signature, but at least sends a message to the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I make the recommended, I make the suggested motion?
Sir, a second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a concern. We don't even, what's the wording? I guess, I would like to have us see what we're wording on.
It's in your packet.
Did we get this in our packet?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Grinberg.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been contacted by a few people as well, and did some background work on this. As a few comments I'll make, I requested all the testimony from the House Committee that was held back in, I think it was February. And I've talked to the chairman of the committee, who's going to hear the bill Thursday this week. It'll be heard in the Senate Government Veterans Affairs Committee. And I peruse the minutes, is, if you've spent any time reading and getting knowledgeable And I peruse the minutes, is if you've spent any time reading and getting knowledgeable on the topic. There's maybe a growing debate across the country to renew this effort, to solidify this in the Constitution, so this is a constitutional discussion that's taken decades. Four or five states have withdrawn over the last few years. Legal interpretation, whether that is allowed, will be allowed by the Supreme Court, is yet to be determined or pushed legally. And when I look at the votes in the House, like Cass County, there were ten for and ten against, which says it's divided. And then when I take and look at districts that the legislature is locally here elected to represent us in Bismarck, to me, it's more important to know what our local legislators think versus, you know, a hundred and forty-four that show up in Bismarck from across the state. And in my own legislative district, two women who I have utmost respect for have different votes on this issue. So it maybe just contrasts or compares the national debate that's happened for decades about, you know, moving this into the Constitution. I've talked to four of my former colleagues in the Senate on their opinions over the weekend, and it's divided from their perspective, even though they haven't had the floor debate yet. But three of the four said in their opinion, this is not a city commission issue to wrestle with, it's ours in the state legislature. And then, of course, I also checked with my most important person in my life, my wife and my mother, who's here tonight, by the way. Didn't ask my mom's opinion, but I did ask my wife, so for what it's worth. The legal question, as I mentioned earlier, is whether states can withdraw. And again, you can interpret your own content from the internet, but, you know, some credible sources seem to think that Congress is unlikely to act. I think last year, two thousand eighteen, Illinois enacted it as one of the states for putting it in the Constitution. So then I went to National League of Cities. I said, how big of a debate is this across the nation? I couldn't find anything on the National League of Cities that appeared that cities across the country are moving into this arena. The only exception was North Carolina in a recent municipality debate with preemption at the North Carolina Legislature about allowing cities to determine their own discrimination laws. And that backs up with one gentleman I talked to who is close to the judicial system that says, since the ERA enactment, or since the ERA movement, if I can use that, in the seventies, federal, state, and local laws have been enacted across the nation to address the issue. And recently, in July of two thousand seventeen, Mayor Mahoney signed our updated discrimination policy. And in my experience in the legislature, I have voted repeatedly to allow sexual orientation to be part of North Dakota's discrimination laws. So I think my record stands from a personal standpoint of doing the right thing. But I struggle with this being a city commission action, and visiting with Mr. Grubb earlier, he couldn't recall that we've ever taken a position like this at a city commission, so I am a little concerned about the precedents. We do have the ability to send messages on various legislation. Mayor Mahoney and I were diligently working yesterday on a letter to send on another bill that we wanted to pass, and it was defeated today, but the City of Fargo supported that. We have had other messaging from staff, we've had discussions at city commission level about taking positions at the city commission on legislative matters or empowering the mayor as home, as mayor of the city or staff in a collective way unless deemed appropriate by the commission to bring forward, which Commissioner Strand has done, and I completely respect that. So I just wanted to have some context for some of the work that I've done and read into this because it's an important issue. But I'm still struggling whether the city commission needs to take action on items such as this, and we use that to staff and using our judgment to oppose or support bills in the legislature.
Mr. Strand?
Certainly, and Karen, do you want to, I see you going near the podium. Would, I'll yield to you for the moment. Okay, and then I'll speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Grinberg, and I appreciate your thoughts, and you touched on several of them, and I can't certainly address the one about setting a precedent with the city commission. But you brought up a couple of other points about amendments that have been passed, such as the fourteenth, to make adjustments, if you will, but those still do not reach equality for women. As I mentioned, they still don't have the status of a legal case against, like say, race or religion, for example. The concern that I have about the discussion that was on the House and some of the comments and information that is being shared that's creating a debate about this are, I believe, false and erroneous and fear mongering.
I would agree with that.
Thank you, and I think we all here can be comfortable in how the Constitution is interpreted. And there is no organization five oh C three propaganda that was used on the House floor that set a completely false air of what the Equal Rights Amendment does, and none of those organizations interpret the Constitution, we know how the Constitution is interpreted. And I believe in that, and that's why I believe so firmly about this. I do really strongly recommend the commission taking this precedent, not just because Grand Forks did, but because we, you know, leaders go first. The definition of leadership is someone that goes first, and Fargo is a leader in the state in many areas, and I think it's very important that we respect all of our citizens and provide equal rights for women.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing? So what I asked for was HCR thirty-three seven, that's what I'm looking, we don't have it in front of us, that's what I'm saying. And I'm just saying, for us as a city commission, if you want to vote either yea or nay on it, we should have it and see what it is. And right now, I don't have it in front of me, I didn't have it before this meeting in front of me. Do you get what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying? No?
You could table it until two weeks, two days, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, but you get what I'm saying?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
It simply is states that it's a resolution that nullifies North Dakota's ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment, which Commissioner Grinberg already brought up, is a legal question that has not been determined whether or not states can nullify their ratification.
Mr. Chair, I get what you're saying, but if we're going to vote on it, I got to see it. I can understand your, what you're telling me, but I'm just saying, unless I see it, that makes it tough for me. Thank you.
Josie Danz, four twenty Broadway. I guess my main point would be, and Commissioner Grinberg, I understand your concern with this setting a precedent, but I think that this is very important, and I think that by the City of Fargo taking a stand, it shows that, if nothing else, it's symbolic, as Fargo is the largest city in North Dakota and a big economic center for our state. And I think that if the state goes through with thirty-three seven, that would send a terrible message to anyone that is looking to make North Dakota their home for young people across the country considering moving to Fargo or anywhere else in North Dakota. I think that it would set us back greatly, and I think that by Fargo taking a stand, that would show the rest of the state that this is an important matter, and I, again, I understand the precedent, but it's very symbolic if we act as the leaders on this important issue. Thanks.
Mr. Gary, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Strand, you had yielded, I'll go, Commissioner Gary.
So we should talk about what we're talking about. The amendment that we're talking about to the U.S. Constitution would read in part, equality of rights under the law shall not be determined or abridged, or excuse me, denied or abridged by the United States or any state on account of sex. The fourteenth amendment in part reads, no state shall deprive a person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection under the law. It's the same thing. So it's not a place to vote on this, I don't think. It's a constitutional amendment at the highest level, and the state is the one that votes on it. I think we should leave it alone and let the state do what they do, and we should do what we do.
Which you would say is presently covered by our city ordinance.
Well, it's covered by the fourteenth amendment of the Constitution of the United States.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and you know, I'd like to thank the women who stepped up and the men who asked us to consider this topic. It's not a minor topic, and if somebody says to me, that's not a legislative issue, well, you know what? We live here in this state, and we care about this state. There are so many issues in the legislature going on this year, I've been keeping my mouth zipped. And we have a great working relationship with the legislature. But when it comes to people issues, we need to get on, into the world present and reflect the attitudes that will help us succeed at recruiting people to move here and live here and work here. And if we're not going to be on board to put out messaging that says we're a great community, we're a welcoming, accepting community, we treat everybody as best we can equally, if we can't do that, we should do that. You know, if, we are all, they're having state, national leaders come in and tell us we have thirty-five thousand job openings, thirty-plus thousand job openings. Yet we have people telling us what they need and want in this state to move here. And part of it is an open mind and a willingness to give everybody equal, a level playing field. So they can say, people can say this isn't a city, a legislative issue, but I would hope they would listen to Fargo. I would hope they'd listen to the people in our community who say this stuff does matter. It does matter what we say to our people, it does matter to what we say to our young girls and our young boys and our future generations. What type of expectation, what type of bar we, how high we set the bar, how we want people treated, how we want them respected, the dignity of the human being. So I'm disappointed the legislature went down this path, they didn't have to. They didn't have to raise an issue that will polarize us and get us fighting over something as simple as our men and women equally treated, or should they be? No, I hope they withdraw it, and it has no bearing that we'll make this stand, that the Fargo City Commission asks them to please do not support this position which many perceive to be anti-women. I just thank you all for bringing this forward, and it's not going to do any harm if we put a yea vote on this. It will do some harm, perhaps, I'm suggesting, if we don't support this messaging that this great city puts out to the world and our state.
Any other discussion? The quandary that happens with the city sometimes is we interfere with legislative process, we sometimes get certain people's nose out of joint in the legislative body because we're trying to help them with their legislative issues. But on the secondary part of that, as Commissioner Strand talked about, we also stand as a city for what we represent or what we put out there. Equal rights amendment for women have equal rights as men, and our community is paramount to us getting people to come into town, people to come and work for us, to get people to come. We're the number eleven city in the United States as livability, and the millennials want to come here, but we always talked about, are we an embracing city or are we a city that's pushing people away? We need to get people in this community to work, we need people to come here and want to live in this community. So John, I see your motion and concern as you see it, but I also see Commissioner Grinberg's as well, where he's a little bit concerned what the legislative body will interpret this, is us overstepping our bounds to try to recommend their legislative process. So the options would be for commissioners to reach out to all those people, or if we do a motion, then that would be something that we send a message. Commissioner Pepcorn, if you're not comfortable that we don't understand or haven't seen it in front of us, there would be an option to table it for two weeks, but I think the hearing is on Thursday, so any influence we would have on that would be lost at this time, I believe. So the commission has to make a decision what we'd like to do to go forward, so I leave that to your discussion. Commissioner Pepcorn, did you want to speak?
Well, I think we have a motion, though, that's the challenge, and I think your point is true. But John, I hope you can see my concern, be able to see that in front of us, that's critical, that's what we're voting on. And I do think that even though that's maybe a technical detail, that's, it's an important thing, so that's, whatever everyone else is comfortable with, but I do think if we table it, then it's a moot point.
Mr. Grinberg.
Just two points. One, the conversation I had with some of my women friends in the Senate wasn't that they felt the legislature's heavy-handed and going to tell the city what to do, it was just more, this is a matter they need to deal with in the legislature. They didn't have a strong opinion one way or the other, it's more of a legislative issue than, you know, whether the city commission is going to have any influence. And either way this vote goes, we can still send a message to our lobbyists or city staff to oppose the measure on Thursday. So it'd be very customary to pass practice on how we deal with certain pieces of legislation.
I call the question. Roll call vote please.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
No.
Gary. Pepcorn.
No.
Mahoney.
Aye. Report on tax increment financing districts, report by Jim Gilmore.
Previously, when we were discussing tax increment financing for the downtown C one renewal district, you had requested, can I report on where we were with all the different tax increment financing districts? And so I'm bringing that to you tonight. The information we put together here is from the finance office, the assessor's office, they did most of the work on this. Right now, we have sixteen different TIF districts that are in place. There's two more that will come online over the next year, one for parking, proposed parking garage at Fourth Avenue North and Broadway, and the other Block Nine is not on the list yet, that'll start in the coming year. The overall increase in these TIF districts, and you can see the base here of each of the values, so they all started in different years, but in their start year, they had a value of ten million. There was a three-hundred-and-sixty-three million dollar increase in valuation in the districts within the time period that exists. So at the current level, they are at three-hundred-and-seventy-four million, and the city receives about four-point-six million a year in TIF revenue to reimburse it for costs that incurred for that development. If you look at the list, one of the things that kind of stood out to me is that seven of these districts will be closing over the next four years, and that will actually have the four-point-six million in TIF revenue, we project that's going to drop down to four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand a year as some of these larger TIF districts mature and close out. Most of the districts, some of them have gone on for quite some period of time. Up until two thousand and eleven, there was no limit on the time period of a TIF district. In two thousand and eleven, the legislature capped that at twenty-five years, and there's also the city, when we're using TIF notes, there's been our policy on developer assistance reimbursement to limit them to fifteen years. So that's sort of the new time period that's allowed. One of the TIF districts I wanted to especially call your attention to is one that was created in two thousand and one, it's a large, it's almost a square mile in size out in the southwest part of town. What'll happen next on the agenda is a recommendation to go ahead and close that district. But first, maybe just see if you have any questions on this report or any of the particular TIF districts.
So what I had done, I asked Jim to look at this because it was a question of the commission in time to what's going on with TIF districts. This is a good idea to get this, and we'll actually close the TIF in the next motion, but I think we all have to be aware of what the impact is of the TIF districts and the fact that the value has gone up so much and we're getting tax revenue four million dollars is a big plus for that program. So I just, questions you can ask Jim, any discussion? So I open it for discussion. Mr. Gary?
Just so everyone's aware, Jim, when you say that, you know, the TIF district is what, was it four-point-three or whatever the number was, that's how much the city was bringing in in those districts. When the TIFs come off, there's four million dollars in revenue now, explain to people what you mean by that, because, I mean, most people think that we're just getting that money, and then, you know, when it comes off, it's just, that's just how it grew, and now it's all used the same way. But the schools will get that money, the park board will get that money, the airport, so forth.
Correct. So there's four points, the people are paying their property taxes as if they were in a TIF district or not in a TIF district. They have a value, there's a mill levy, and that money is collected by the county. When you have a TIF district in place, those property tax revenues, instead of being distributed to the schools, the county, the parks, the airport, et cetera, comes to the city to pay for costs that the city has incurred. So the city is, you know, you often put in some infrastructure, providing some incentive to the developer, so that reimburses the city. And I think particularly over the last ten years, we have better financial security in place so that there's no risk to the city. So what will happen in the future as these districts close is the people will pay that same amount in property taxes, but instead of going into the City of Fargo TIF fund, it'll be distributed to all the taxing jurisdictions locally as well as the statewide mill levies.
And then they'll hope the value will go up during that time. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So the hope here is that, you know, when the school district, for example, or the park board, or whomever sees that increase in revenue, hopefully they can cut their mills, right? So that's the whole hope for all this, is that's the upside of these things, that now that they have that increased revenue, there shouldn't need to be any kind of increases, in fact, there could be decreases because they're taking in more than they were the year before, just based on the TIF going away. So that's what I hope we see next year with all these new revenues coming in, is that those mills can get pushed down, not only by the city, which we've been trying very hard to do, but the other taxing entities as well, because they are benefiting directly from this.
You're right, each individual taxing jurisdiction will decide whether, what their mill levy will be, and so some may choose to drop the mill levy because of this additional revenue. You know, others, I think, the airport, for instance, just always levies two mills regardless of what the value is.
Any other questions? Mr. Grinberg, I thought you would like this report.
Yeah.
Very nice job. Any other questions? Item thirty-seven, recommendation to close this TIF district two oh oh one dash oh one, Jim Gilmore to explain as well.
Yeah, this district, as I mentioned, has been in place in two thousand and one, it was used to reimburse the city for costs primarily for Forty-second Street, constructed between I ninety-four and Thirty-second Avenue South. It was quite expensive, some power lines needed to be removed, there's been some other infrastructure that was done, as well as some incentives to lower pipelines in the area. The balance on this, in this TIF district is, right now, is about four-point-six million, that does not include projects that you've already included. There are projects contemplated widening Twenty-third Avenue between Forty-second and Forty-fifth that would estimate, as well as a traffic light and Thirtieth Avenue and Forty-second Street, and possibly some stormwater retention that could cost about four-point-nine million. But with the revenue that's at on hand, what the Finance Committee is recommending is that that money be set aside for those future projects, and that the city go ahead and close out the district and inform the county that this district would not be in place next year. The financial impact of that, and again, this is an increase in property tax revenue from these properties, they're already paying this money, instead of going into the TIF fund, these different local governments will receive these amounts. West Fargo Schools, approximately one-point-four million, City of Fargo, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, Cass County, five-hundred thousand, and Fargo Park District, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. So as the assessor, you know, tells the county, we're not, you don't, don't collect that TIF fund for us anymore, the people will pay their regular property taxes, and it will be distributed to these districts. This is based on last year's mill levies and last year's valuation, so these numbers could vary slightly. So that's the recommended motion is to, you know, direct the city assessor to report to the county that the additional TIF funds would not be needed, and so it'll allow these local governments, including the City of Fargo, to be aware that this property tax base will be part of the overall property tax base of the city next year.
Any questions? Mr. Gary?
I have one quick one. So Jim, were they still, like the West Fargo- I have one quick one. So Jim, were they still, like, the, the West Fargo School District, during this TIF district, were they still getting, they were getting a lower, but they were still getting, were they still receiving a property tax during the TIF? That's my question.
Yes, they were. However, that value was based on a value of, you know, $347,000 in, in value. So they were probably only receiving, you know, a couple thousand dollars a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Suggested motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion?
That's good news.
Will Caldwell?
Gary?
Yes.
Greenberg?
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 38, Performing Arts Center Task Force update. Is that, who's giving that?
Mr. Chair, I'll start real quick, and then John, is that okay, is that okay with you, John?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'll just kind of give, and we have some of the members of our task force here, and so we have a very good group, and I would say we still have a few months to go. We've, we have very good discussion. We're all, not all on the same page, and that's a good thing. I will say, so what we've got, our site selection is basically focused now on the Civic Center location. And so now, what I look at is we're gonna have more refined details, have an architectural rendering, and I would say the next two major challenges are gonna be funding and the cost of the building. And so now that we have a little more precise idea of where it's gonna be, now to find out what it's gonna cost and how we're gonna pay for it, those are, those are the two simple questions. That's all we have to answer. Then we're all done. But I, but I would say I'm very optimistic about funding, and I think it will be very unique. The city will, we will be the lead partner, but I think we will have lots of ways. And, and I do think naming rights and going out and actively fundraising is gonna be a challenge, but I think we can do it. So I'm looking forward to it. And with that, I'll pass it on to my co-chair, Commissioner Strand.
Commissioner, just one thing. Could you explain the site location debate, what you debated about as part of location, what you finally decided?
So, is that all right, John?
Absolutely.
So, so what, we, we basically had three sites. The former Steel Company site, the, the other end of this block, I don't know how to describe that, but right at the corner where the stop, where the current parking lot is, and then the, the Civic Center. And if you don't mind, I'll just kind of give you, so we, we had kind of a thorough review. And the main thing about the Civic Center site is the skyways are connected to four parking, enclosed parking lots. That's a huge thing, especially when it's 20 below. But also, it's within walking distance of Broadway. And for the whole economic impact of people going to events and then going out to eat, or going out and, going out afterwards and celebrating, we want to have it within walking distance. And so that's, I would say, there were a lot of pros and cons to, to the sites, but, but the Civic Center, the summary is the, the whole pedestrian and parking were kind of the key things.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Pepcorn. This, this discussion about a performing arts center is, is a very critically, it's an important discussion happening, and it's been coming for years. Here's where we have a moment to reach out to the rest of the Commission relative to the, what we've discussed at our task force. The group has, generally speaking, landed on the notion that if they get that, get there, they would propose a performing arts center. That's a big if. But if they get there, they would propose it on the location of the current Civic Center. And, and I, and I can understand that, and everything they're weighing suggests that's the better location relative to Mid-America Steel or to the Plaza over here. Here's the question I posed, and, and I'm not saying I, I, I'm, this is a, I'm not gonna die on this hill, but it's, it's a critical question in my mind to ask the Commission and the community. Do you have another, or are we open to another potential use for the Civic Center if there is an idea out there? If there's a developer, or if there's somebody in the private world that has a proposal they'd like to bring to us, or a concept to throw to us to consider, this is the time to do it. And, and, and I'm not sure it exists, that there is a, a, a potential reuse for a new life for the Civic Center. But my, my conservative side, my, my embrace your assets that you have side, that you steward for side now, says let's, I'd like to ask the community, do you have any suggestions? Do you have any proposals? Do you have any ideas that, that we could consider now for the Civic Center before we very likely otherwise make a decision that that will be the location for the performing arts center? And, and I'd asked for an RFP. I don't think an RFP is, 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 will do this. My, my guess is we've probably already accomplished this by putting the word out, if you're out there, and if you have a proposal that you'd like to bring our way, or an idea, this is the time to do it. And, and again, I don't know that it is there. But I, I'd feel real remiss if we went down this path and talked demolishing a public asset, and then after the fact, found out, gosh darn, you should have maybe explored this public use or this other private use. So that's where we're at.
We have to do some more fundraising, Dave, if it moves, huh?
We can call it the Mahoney Performing Arts Center. You just let me know if you're available to write a check.
Well, I, I
Mr. Greenberg.
For the update, I have not, I haven't followed you that closely. To be honest, there's been a few other major things going on, so I appreciate the update. You know, just for what it's worth my two cents, at some point, it might, like I advocated here six, nine months ago, I think what the project really needs is a feasibility study with community survey, key stakeholder feedback. Those individuals who run companies that have ability to pledge $10 million, $5 million, and their opinions are really gonna matter. And so, you know, it might be just a wise idea to figure out how that next step should be. And I don't know what your timelines are, but you'd have a full-fledged feasibility study on the financial model that, how much could we raise as a community? And because I'm not gonna support city funds into this until the private sector's well over 50% of it. And so I'm just gonna declare that tonight. We're not gonna put city funds in first, and my, I won't vote for that till the private sector stepped up in a major way. And so how do you get to there? And there's a sophisticated process for fundraising, and that might be some point you're gonna have to bring that in, at least to evaluate how that 60-day feasibility study fits into where you're going.
Mr. Chair, we have, that is on our list, correct, Mike? We have, we have a very thorough, as far as fundraising and all that stuff, that's on our list. So we, we've got a good group. And anybody's welcome to come to our meetings. We'd love to have you. We have a very good group, and we also, John will vouch for this, we have very lively discussion of them or not. We don't all agree on almost anything. So, but that's a good thing.
Flood update. Nathan or Bruce, are you gonna give this? Bruce is all excited to get together at the Sandbag Central at 5:00 in the morning for an interview. We could replace you with the Commissioner if you want, but I think you've got that one covered, don't you, Bruce?
Thank you for recognizing that. Couple of weeks ago at our last Commission meeting, we gave our first flood update of the season. And we did that both to inform the Commission. I mean, you heard rumors floating around about the street, but to inform Commissioners and the public as to what the current probabilistic flood forecast was at that time and what that might mean to Fargo. At this point in time, the National Weather Service has informed us that they will not be releasing any more probabilistic flood forecasts. They are waiting to release the first deterministic forecast that they think will be in the next couple of weeks. So just to update everybody, a week ago today, actually, we held a tabletop flood training exercise out at our Emergency Operations Center. It was a joint tabletop between the city and the county. And we had a packed room. We kind of used that as a refresher for staff because of the institutional flood fighting knowledge that we've lost since 2013. And I think we all thought, both city and county folks, that it was extremely valuable. And so some of the new faces that we have at the city and county in leadership positions, although they're new, we looked at both our benches and think we both have a pretty deep bench. So happy to report that. This morning, we held our first public flood meeting here in the Commission chambers. That was also a joint meeting, city and county. And we also had other outside agencies that attended. It was very well-attended. Agencies such as the National Weather Service, Fargo and West Fargo School Districts, NDSU, the chamber was represented, Fargo Park District, National Guard, and North Dakota Department of Emergency Services. So we did get a presentation. We requested that from the National Weather Service about their latest probabilistic forecast and what inputs went into their modeling that led them to that conclusion. And then we talked about both the city and county flood fighting strategies. And to that end, Nathan has prepared an updated presentation, an update to what you saw two weeks ago, that, that essentially what he went through this morning, that I thought would be very informative for you. So Nate.
Yeah. Thank you, Bruce. Good evening. So yeah, I won't spend too much time on this slide. Everybody is probably well aware at this point what our probabilistic forecast is, and that we are planning for a potential 41-foot crest. This slide here, I'm not sure if you guys have seen this one yet or not, but this is based off of the forecast that the National Weather Service issued a couple of weeks ago with our higher outlooks. What this is really telling us is that in order to see those higher crest elevations, as Bruce was kind of alluding to, it's, we're looking at a crest probably occurring about mid-April. So this is kind of given probabilistic timeframes of when we could see those higher crest elevations. So this slide here is issued by the National Weather Service. It's our current probabilistic forecast for the range of March 18th to, out into June is where they have it. You can see there that, as a couple slides ago, we have a 50% chance of essentially reaching a 38-foot flood and a 10% chance of reaching a 40.83 flood. Why I show that is because this next slide here is the 2009 probabilistic forecast for the exact same timeframe. So this flood forecast was issued in 2009, the exact same day it was here just a few weeks ago. As you can see, our 50% chance at that time was a 38-foot flood, and our 10% chance was a 40-foot flood. So our ranges that we are seeing today are real close to what the 2009 event was actually showing at the time. Obviously, what type of crest we actually see will be dependent on what type of melt we experience, but there is a chance that we could see those levels similar to 2009. So what have we been doing? This is not just engineering. This includes a whole host of all city staff, obviously. Sandbag Central is going to be starting tomorrow. We have worked on finalizing our protection plan for 41-foot crest with the two feet of freeboard on that protection line. We've started looking at staffing assignments throughout the city for various items, whether it's the Emergency Operations Center, Sandbag Central, as well as actually when we move into field operations, deploying appropriate staff at the Sandbag construction locations. We've also been coordinating with the Corps of Engineers for constructing, or assisting us in constructing emergency clay levies. Ben's guys have also been completing a lot of snow removal through town in the areas that sandbagging operations will be occurring. So we gotta make sure that we remove all those banks of snow to, so we have room for bringing the sandbags out to neighborhoods. And then they've also been doing some of the removal of snow on legal drains where it is city-owned or public property. We've also been procuring a lot of outside resources, whether it's sandbag filling-related equipment for Sandbag Central operations. Ben has been procuring various items that will be needed for placement of the sandbags, whether it's skid steers, plywood, stuff like that to help get in backyards. We've also been getting some surveying assistance from the engineering firms out there, as well as purchasing and contracting different tools in our toolbox that we use for being able to create that line of protection. And then, of course, backup pumps. So we will continue, staff will continue to further refine our deployment options for the sandbagging operations. That'll include the offloading of the sandbags in the neighborhoods, as well as the placement planning. So at what point do we start actually placing them? We will also work on further the conversations with contractors on the timing for the rapid deploy product installation. I'll speak here a little bit. And then, as well as the timing for the emergency clay levy construction starting. Probably the most stuff that'll be happening here in the next week or so will be actually public works related. That staff will be starting to close a lot of the storm sewer gates as the river's starting to rise and starting to make sure all our lift stations are up and running. And then, over the next week or so, you'll also start seeing some of the removable flood wall panels getting installed where it won't impact traffic. And then also placement of the temporary pumps in case we do lose power for some reason during the flooding period. So we do have a couple meetings scheduled for the public that we encourage anybody to attend. The first meeting is Monday next week at April 1st at the Fargo Dome, and then the south side of the city will, meeting is April 2nd at Centennial Elementary School. We'll have all our neighborhood protection plans available for viewing for the public at that meeting, as well as the staff that will be out in those neighborhoods will be available to answer individual questions that any property owners may have with this upcoming flood. So here on the right-hand side is very high detail, obviously, of what our 41-foot crest protection plan looks like. As I mentioned before, we are planning for two feet of freeboard with that level. And with that level, we are going to be relying on a lot of the work that's been completed in the recent history, as well as been in place for a while. So you can see there, we're relying on, you know, over, you know, almost 25 miles of existing earth levy or concrete flood walls, as well as the 12 removable flood wall locations that will be going in soon. And then, of course, a lot of storm sewer lift stations, make sure that we're handling any runoff that happens in the interior part of the city while the river is up high. Unfortunately, though, we have a lot of emergency measures that will have to be installed in a rather short timeframe. So you can see there, if you total all those up, we're just shy about 20 miles worth of emergency measures that we have to construct here in the next few weeks. And then Ben will be procuring a bunch of backup pumps in case, again, we do lose power during the flood for some reason. We'll hopefully be able to still get rid of all that runoff or rainfall. So one thing here, I wanted to make sure that the public's very aware that the City of Fargo does have an interactive flood stage map that they can go and view on our website. If they go to fargond.gov backslash maps and click on flood stages. This allows them to go from river stage of 18 feet all the way up to 44 feet and see what level their home or property could potentially be impacted if the city were to lose on the flood fight. So the map up here I'm showing right now is a stage of 41 feet on the river. This is down by Island Park or the Fourth Street Levy, where you see the green is if that levy was not in existence. That's where the water would be during a 41-foot crest. Of course, we have that levy there, and we're confident that it will remain there during the flood event. So it should actually be more represented in the blue while we're passing that 41-foot level through town. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Chairman and Nathan, I was, I'm not able to attend this morning, so maybe this was covered with your information. At what point do we have to pull the trigger on activating a lot of like, you know, levy creation, et cetera? You know, if we get another week to 10 days without any significant rain and the temperatures forecast looks pretty favorable, what's the magic date to pull the trigger by that April 15th to go through the effort and the expense?
Yeah. Historically, once the river starts reacting or start rising, we have seven days until the crest is reached. So with the amount of work we're looking at, we think we should be able to wait for that first deterministic forecast. The one wild card that we don't quite have a good grasp on yet is the clay levy construction. Our staff went around with the Corps of Engineers today, looked at all the locations, and will be developing a plan and kind of a timeframe of when, how long it'll take to construct those temporary clay levies. That may need to start a little in advance of that seven-day window.
Sioux Falls had a
Sioux Falls had a rain event, and that really screwed up their stuff. So that's really what we get fearful of. If we have a rain event of two inches or more, that could cause some difficulties for us. So it's always a little bit, is we don't want to be underprepared if we have to move quickly. Yet we don't want to have the chaos we had in 2009. We'd like to have this a little bit more orderly.
Yeah. So our goal right now is to have basically everything in place that if we wanted to go and pull the trigger on starting constructing some of these tomorrow, we absolutely could.
Just a reminder, who pulls the trigger and what's the decision process? Is that a City Commission action, or is that the mayor's action? Who decides?
Well, generally, we would call a special commission meeting, you know, every two weeks when you're in a seven-day period. It hasn't been uncommon in the past where those types of actions, Commissioner, we would, we would call a special commission meeting to pull that trigger. And that's a big decision.
In the past, what we would do would call an emergency meeting.
In the past, what we would do would call an emergency meeting, they have the commission, hear all the facts and hear what our engineers say, hear what Nathan recommends and Bruce recommends, and make a decision. But whenever we pull the trigger for the real, real hard work that has to be done, yes, the commission will be very much involved.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. Bruce and Nathan, you know, we've had a lot done since the '09 flood, and it's giving us quite a bit of protection that obviously didn't exist before. What would this look like now if the diversion were in place? What would our reaction be if that's what we had now versus our preparation that's required at this point?
Yeah, absolutely. So if the diversion was in place and the City of Fargo had all our additional projects that we've identified for safely passing thirty-seven feet through town completed as well, so say 10 years from now, all those projects are done, diversion's done, at a 5% level that we're looking at today, that 41.4 is essentially the hundred-year floodplain level or flows. So diversion would be passing thirty-seven feet through town, there would be no discussion of emergency measures within the City of Fargo with a diversion in place. We'd be making sure that everything related to diversion is ready to go, functional, and then the activities would be seen within the city would be similar to a lot of the stuff Ben's doing already, getting the removable floodwalls put in place as well as getting all our storm sewer lift stations operating. And then during the event itself, we would have people walking the levees and monitoring everything.
One notable correction, six or seven years, not 10.
I'm hoping that we have a period that's constructed before we had to test it out.
Thank you for saying that. Any other discussion? Commissioner Grinberg, perhaps you could just explain a little bit to the team, you're working on the finances with the legislative body, is there anything you need help with out there with our public to help you out a little bit on some of the hurdles you have out there?
Oh, there's an hour discussion. At this point, you know, we're in the tail end of the hearing process when the subcommittee in the House Education, or House Environment and Education Committee, I expect they will pass out the Senate Bill 2020 tomorrow or Wednesday. We'll know exactly what they're going to, how they're going to amend the bill and what we've asked them to do. There's still some moving parts. I mentioned earlier a bill that we put a letter out yesterday, wanted to pass, and it didn't. There's some effort there, it's got to, whether it's coming back in that Senate bill to address loan package, part of their overall financing. So we'll know more when the House acts and moves the bill forward, but still confident we're in a good place, just going to take till the end of the session to get it right.
Thank you. Just one of the other commissioners to be aware. So Ben, we went out on the flood fight, and we have a bid award for the rental emergency flood pump, bear shot back with equipment at about a $51,413.50. This comes to us because it's over $50,000. Want to explain to the group, please?
Well, that is correct. We fast-tracked this one, we wanted to be out there for seven days, so we got a good response. We put it out there and fast-tracked it based on what we were seeing across the nation, within Sioux Falls, down in Nebraska. The resources, as far as these large pumps, are getting sucked up pretty fast, and so with that, we came in late and asked the mayor to put it on the agenda based on the pricing that came in. So we want to make sure we get our pumps on the ground before anybody has a chance to get them.
And just for the public, how big are these pumps?
These are all six-inch and larger is what it is. So these are the larger pumps, they're carrying anywhere from 2,700 to 5,000 gallons per minute. So not exactly in line with what our lift stations do, but they do provide us additional support when, if we have a power outage or if we have a heavy rain event.
Some, two people could lift?
No, these are all trailer-mounted, and everything gets pulled around, and suction and discharge is fairly heavy and takes some time to set up.
Thank you. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Task order fifteen, task order one, Houston Engineering to provide flood, the survey assistance project, and bid award for rapid deploy fight, flood fighting products and rapid deploy product installation. Nathan, do you explain this as well?
Yeah, so similar to Ben, this is a list of items that we're procuring in advance of the flood fight. The first one on there, the task order number one with, to Houston Engineering, we're not proposing any changes on that one, we'd recommend approval as is on that one. The award for the rapid deploy flood fighting product procurement, we sent out an RFP early last week, got responses back on Thursday on there. Similar to Ben, their supplies were getting depleted rather quickly, so we actually moved forward with procuring of some of those right away, and in the process over the past few days, we identified another 1,200 feet that we'd like to buy of this as well, so we're mending or revising the report of action that was in your package originally to include the purchase of additional $25,200 worth of trap bags. So a total purchase cost of everything at that point would be $197,400 for purchasing of trap bags. These we use in areas where emergency clay levees can't wait quite be constructed, but in areas where we want to reduce the number of sandbags or reliance on volunteers. So it's been a tool that the city's been using for a few years now, we're satisfied with them and got a handful of responses actually from different vendors out there for them, and Trap Bag Company was the lowest on there. And then in order to install them, we also had to put out an RFP for contractor assistance to install these products. We actually wanted to get this in front of you here today as well, but tried to give the contractors as much time as possible to put their bids together, so we allowed these bids to be received at nine o'clock this morning. We got responses from, let's see, six different, or excuse me, five different contractors for both of the two projects. We reviewed the proposals, looked at various costs, and are recommending the award to Northern Improvement and Excavating Inc. for the two projects you see on your screen, FE-19G1 and FE-19G2. Even though we award these contracts, we're not authorizing them to start construction today or tomorrow. The contract will allow us to dictate when we ask those guys to proceed with the construction, and if for some reason we don't proceed with construction, there is no cost to the city for canceling the contract. So right at this point, we just want to make sure that we have these guys ready to go on the shelf, we can start meeting with them and getting the procedures in place with them.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Commissioner Grinberg?
Very similar to what Red Bell Grand Fork City Council did a few weeks ago, they mobilized and had everything teed up ready in case they needed it.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. And Nathan, maybe next time you can show what a trap bag is for the public, we haven't seen trap bags in their yard yet, so they could kind of know what we're talking about. It's a much bigger sandbag, so that would be helpful. Well, any other business for this commission tonight? Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I assume so.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.